I'll call the meeting of May 13th to order. Please rise and join me in the pledge to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I didn't, I put it over here tonight.
That's no fair.
I will entertain a motion to set the agenda.
May I make a comment on the agenda?
I will entertain a motion to set the agenda.
I guess the only thing I'd like to, I don't see the road commissioner's report on there.
You said that you didn't want to do one.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you asked if I had anything else other than the road commissioner. I'd like to just add the road commissioner report.
It was Kay.
Okay, so Tom wants to add the road commissioner's report.
But I'd like to get rid of the ATV policy.
Is there any objection on the part of the board to include the road commissioner's report and to remove the ATV policy?
I'll second it. You made the motion on both them or just?
Steve?
Yeah, I'll make the motion on both of them.
May I make a comment on the agenda, please?
Yes, now you may.
This is Annette Smith. I note that you do not have a public comment period on the agenda. And I appreciate that you made your decision at the last meeting to offer the public the opportunity to weigh in when you do the agenda items. But I don't think that that replaces the legal requirement to have a public comment period for other things. So may I suggest that you add a public comment period at the beginning of each agenda?
That's what we plan to do, and I'll be explaining that in a few minutes.
So I didn't see it on the agenda that I, that was posted, so I wanted to make sure it was on. Thank you.
Okay, so we will include the road commissioner's report right after the local management, emergency management. And we will strike the item here and act on planning commission report on ATVs. Roll call. Doug White?
Yes.
Mike Powers?
Here.
Tom? Steve?
Yes.
And I vote yes. So the agenda is set. Now, I will explain the ground rules for the meeting because we seem to have strayed from that at the last meeting. The meeting is run according to Robert's Rules of Order. Public comment will be entertained before board deliberation on each agenda item. The chair will recognize people when it is their turn to speak. Please state your name for the record. Comments are to be limited to three minutes or less. One comment per person, per subject. Motions will be made in the affirmative, seconded, and discussed by the board. A motion can be passed, tabled, or voted down. I want to remind everyone that go-to meeting is a privilege and is not required when live meetings are being held. If those wishing to participate remotely do not abide by the rules, the option may be discontinued. Next, I will entertain a motion to adopt the minutes of April 8th, 2021.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion by Steve, seconded by Tom, to adopt the minutes of April 8th. Is there any discussion on the minutes? Any discussion on the minutes? Roll call, vote. Doug White?
Yes.
Mike Powers?
Yes.
Tom Fuller?
Yes.
Steve Haines?
Yes.
Brad Bender?
Yes.
I would like to offer some commendations for some jobs that have been very well done. The first is to Jesse Piles for coordinating Greenup Day and all that went with that. The second is to our road crew, who cleaned up the town gravel pit, took all of the old culverts to be recycled for scrap, and brought in $1,537 for the scrap. The next commendation is to our planning commission, who worked very hard on developing ideas about an ATV ordinance, contacting the 20-some towns that have ATV ordinances, and spent many hours of their time doing that. And the last commendation is to our vice chairman, who worked with Cliff Hughes to hopefully make a bear-proof area for the food composting scraps. Thank you, Steve.
Is that a trap?
I hope so. That was the plan. Wasn't to keep them out, it was to keep them in.
Okay, we have a report from Shelley Taylor, our representative to the Brooklyn Regional Planning Commission.
Hello.
Hello.
So they met on the, oh gosh, I forgot the date, it's the third Tuesday of the month. And there wasn't a regional committee meeting, which I'm part of, which sees Act 250 and stuff like that for cell towers, solar arrays, what have you. And the other, the last part of the meeting was for Senator Brian Collmore, who discussed his legislation, what, not his legislation, but the actual legislation. I'm blanking now. What they did in the legislature for the month, or for the six months. That's it?
Thank you, Shelley. Next, we will hear and act on the local emergency management plan. And we have Tom Johnston here to explain that to us.
The computer people can't hear the public people, so if they want to come closer to this mic here, or just talk a little bit louder.
Which is, which is the mic?
The one with the red.
Yep.
I'm sorry.
Can people hear me here if I stand here?
I'm sure if you.
Yep. Yep, I'm Tom Johnston. I'm the local emergency medical director. From our management, emergency management director for the town of Danby. If everybody's not aware, but each municipality must put together a plan and have it accepted by the select board. And it must be reviewed annually and renewed. So at this point in time, I'd like to thank the select board for giving me the opportunity to present this tonight. So I've worked with Stephanie Bork and other local officials here to advise the plan and bring it up to date with some additions, deletions, and changes to keep us according to state statutes up to date. The select board presented with the plan. It's really not that much different than it has been in the past several years. I will entertain any questions, if there were any. You're good?
We're good.
Any questions from the public? Anybody raising a hand on the computer?
Nobody is unmuted, so I'm going to say everybody is.
All right. Okay, so then I will entertain a motion to adopt the local emergency management plan.
I will make the motion to adopt it and to thank Tom for the work that he's done to it.
I will second the motion.
Any discussion? No discussion? Roll call, vote. Doug White?
Yes.
Mike Powers?
Yes.
Tom Fuller?
Yes.
Steve Haines?
Yes.
And I say yes. Next, we'll have the road commissioner's report.
Well, the highlight of it was going to be that we started cleaning up 30 years of mess at the gravel pit, but you took the thunder away on that one. So the, if anyone who's not aware of, we've got roughly 50 acres of gravel pit over on the west side that for the last 30-plus years has been used for getting rid of our old culverts and stuff like that. And the price of steel is up right now, so we made a good attempt to get rid of a lot of it. And we actually made some money on it. We're gonna use the mower that we have in session right now, or the one that they seem to think that it works, so we're gonna start off the year with it. Steve's looking at me like it doesn't run, but. So for the roadside mowing, we started cotton brush up on Scottsville on Rockwell Hill. That's part of our grant project for the Better Back Roads. It's on the state's high priority area for our MRGP, which is our Municipal Road General Permit, for doing some stabilization and ditching work there. And that's about it for this past month.
Thank you, Tom. Are there any questions? Okay, next I will entertain a motion to set the date of June 26th, 2021 for our annual dump day.
I'll make the motion. We set it for 26th.
I'll second it.
Discussion. We have price lists. But you've seen in your emails, do we?
Now, you said we lost money last year at it?
We did lose money. Doug told me it was somewhere around $1,500.
And how many dumpsters did we actually ship, though, for that little bit of a loss?
I couldn't tell you exactly.
I mean, like you, we said in the past, we're not trying to make money off it at all. And it'd be nice to cover most of our costs, but it's awfully nice to keep, give people a more affordable way to, instead of dumping it side the road. It'll help keep the town cleaner. So I guess I don't see any reason to raise the pricing this year. And I'm sure everybody, unless somebody else has a comment that you want to see us make money as opposed to clean up the town.
Well, I think you're exactly right. If we raise the price too much, people are gonna go back to throwing stuff side the road or over the bank.
I'm good with leaving it.
All right. Any public comment on it? Okay, we'll call the question then to set the date of June 26th for Dump Day. Doug?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Yes. Transfer station report. Turn that over to Steve.
Well, the only thing I can really say we have to report is the bear cage. Brad took the thunder.
Talking about the negotiations, if you want to, or the, maybe that's not the right word. The conversations we've had with the town of Mount Tabor regarding combined.
Oh, you want to talk about that? Wow. Basically, what happened is the town of Mount Tabor said, until we can figure out a way to break even on our pricing and to not lose as much money on our dump, that they're not interested in partnering with us, but they would lease us their facility if we wanted to lease it. And I personally see no reason in that because we're already losing money, so why would we lose more money to lease somebody else's facility when we have one?
Now, they never gave a price, though, on leasing, right?
I never asked.
But I don't think it had a real value. I think they were kind of trying to slide it over to the town since we were the white elephant and they were running a pretty clean operation that they, long as they didn't cost them any money if we wanted to use their yard space. Which I'm, I just kind of second-hand from the board on, from Mount Tabor, so I was. Which I think, there's no reason to say that that discussion is dead unless you guys are completely, I mean, I, I don't think it's.
I wouldn't say it was completely dead, but at this point in time, in my opinion, until we start getting our costs under control, I don't really see where it will benefit us to take on more costs of any.
Now, what costs more would you think?
Well, we would have to move our compacters down there. We would have to install electricity. And then we get into the whole issue of employees.
As opposed to, we have employees now.
We have employees now. We have a union employee. They do not. They have a part-time employee and.
But what I thought they wanted us to do is run the whole facility, and we could run it like we run ours.
That was not my impression.
They do not want to push Carl out. They want to continue to have him there as their dump attendant. Just the same as we wanted to keep Cliffy on as our dump attendant. They did not want to push him out or cause any ill will between him and the town. And of course, neither do we. My idea, and Brad's idea, was that we would have two attendants and to do extra days when we were looking to partner with them. But the last that we discussed it, it was going to be, they weren't interested in partnering with us. We could lease the facility if we wanted to lease it. And at that point in time, I let go of it because I think we need to get our pricing under control before we worry about leasing anything. I didn't ask what the lease would be. I, I can. I can go back and call Mark and set up another meeting, but unless that's what the board really wants, I think we need to worry about getting what we have under control.
But if it doesn't cost us any more to use their land compared to our land.
Right, but we'd have to pour the concrete and put the power in for the compactor.
Plus, we're gonna have to rent porta-potties or something for Cliffy to use. But we could probably move our building down there.
Right now, they don't have porta-potties.
No. Because Carl's not there long enough to.
Require?
Require him, where Cliffy would be.
Well, I think we should meet right where they are right now. I'm with you, Steve, on that.
I answered everything. I mean, I, I just, I mean, in the big picture, the dump or the municipal, is, something's gotta move. It's either the garage, the sand pile, or the dump. Because the guy's trying to actually do work in salt and sand and get in and out of here and stuff when the cars are lined up, is literally an accident waiting to happen. And it has happened.
And we need more.
And, and, and so we really've got to, you know, we've got to have a direction we're gonna go. Either we're gonna move a dump, which is, I thought, would be fairly cheap, meaning the fact that, I didn't think there was anything other than the concrete, maybe some power. And, or spend a million dollars and move our garage. I don't know if we have the million dollars hiding somewhere, but I know we probably could come up with a few thousand dollars if we discussed it more. And I'm just saying that I don't think we should kill the idea yet because I think the time that we're gonna feel stupid that we didn't do anything is when there is a serious accident, where a loader or dump truck backs in over. Because I'm pretty sure most of you have been in here when we're lined up deep and town trucks are trying to get in and out of here. And it's really not a good, safe area to, for this all to take place. I mean, I'd be good with either one idea, but I, I, I mean, financially, I don't think we're gonna move a garage.
Well, we already voted, the town voted that they don't want to.
Yeah, so, so I'm saying, I, I just thought we would, or could explore that a little, little farther and at least come up with some money ideas so that we could talk about what the actual costs would be to do it. And then at least everyone would know. And if it's, you know, if it's too much, obviously, it's something we can't do. But if it's not that much, I think we should at least, you know, get, get it down to the financial end of it. Because if we're gonna lose money here, we're still gonna lose money running the same type of operation on a different piece of land. So they're kind of like apples and oranges in the discussion that we're looking for a safer area to do it, and we got a dump that's losing money. So I, I mean, I'd like to say I'd like to participate, but I don't want to take any more of that part of it. You're doing a great job, Steve, so stop looking at me that way.
So I will reach out to Mark and see what they were thinking for lease, but.
Yeah, I mean, I just, I, I just, they were our best bet at the time, and they really got a great area down there.
They do. And the area they have, I personally, if, if the town of Danby is going to run that facility without them, I would say that we get rid of the compacters altogether and just use their, the open topped dumpsters with the roof over them.
I mean, that's another thing that we can look at the numbers.
Because to me, they have a nice facility where the roof is already there over the garbage, and we're not getting any more garbage in with the packer than we are just throwing it in.
And we're spending lease money on compacters, plus electricity.
Plus maintenance.
Yeah.
And we used to compact it with the machine.
Right. Yeah, I mean, there's a lot, lot of area there that we can look at.
Okay, any comments from the public on the transfer station?
Yes, this is Annette Smith. I'd like to support what Tom is saying. This has been a conversation that's been going on for more than a decade. Something has to change there, and I think that it's a boost for investigating what it's gonna cost. And it just, it's not really about the, the cost of what we're losing money on. It's about making the, the whole area around the town office safe. So thank you, Tom. I, I agree with everything you said.
Any other comments? Okay, we will move along then to entertain a motion to approve fleet permits for Driscoll Brothers, Duquette Forestry, Leo Audi, and CNR Hauling.
I'll make the motion. I'll second it.
Any discussion? Doug?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, I will entertain a motion to adopt the conflict of interest policy. We all have a draft of that. We need to have someone move it and someone to second it before we can discuss it.
I'll make the motion. We accept it.
I'll second it.
Is there a place for public comment at this point?
Yes, you may comment.
Um, I was trying to find a copy of the draft on the Danby Town website so that I could look at it, and I did not find that today. Is there a draft?
Right up there on the homepage, a blue button right up on top.
So Brad, this is Lynn, and I found the copy. I still see a change you've made between the model policy from VLCT and the Danby policy. You have included the word "not," so it now says "shall not deliberate." But it's left out the words "shall not sit with the public body."
That's correct.
Those words are incredibly important because the idea of a recusal is that someone does not have the opportunity to influence. And whether it's real or perceived, it's important that somebody with a conflict of interest removes themselves from the public body deliberating so that they can't have any influence. Rolling eyes, comments, information pass, whatever it may be. Or it's just the appearance of a conflict of interest. That language is in there because that is the best practice that is being proposed by the state of Vermont. And I'd like to know why Danby would not adopt the best practice.
Well, for one reason, Lynn. Right now, if a person was to recuse themselves and go sit in the public, they would have to leave the building. We have no, I mean, and I guess, it, it, right now, Lynn, please let me speak. And right now, for us to be able to deliberate, I mean, the, the model one, which I have here, all it says is "go sit in the public." So to go sit where the gentleman is sitting there, or sitting where I am, he's actually closer to the, so to play musical chairs in an event of the one or two times that someone may recuse themselves seems a little absurd to the board. So that's probably why we're gonna go with our direction. Thank you, though.
I think this does not sit with the public, but being leave the room, Tom.
All right, I guess I'd like to, there was some errors in the draft policy from the model.
Tom, excuse me, can you, can you address my comments, please?
I didn't hear her. Could she, can you direct her comment?
I didn't know what she said.
So, so excuse me. I had fallen off to say that, that, that what they mean by leaving, by not sitting with the public body would mean that you would leave the room, not that just you would move to the other side of the room. That's still the public body. So, so the purpose of this is that you leave the room. You don't, you don't participate in any of the discussions, or I wouldn't, or Brad wouldn't, nobody would, on something that we have a conflict of interest with. We remove ourselves so that we cannot have influence. And that is the language that's in here, and that is the best practice. And I, I'm, I don't understand why Danby would not adopt that best practice. It doesn't mean that you just leave your seat and play musical chairs. That's not what it means.
I'm looking to see where it's, the thing says it, because I'm sure it said that you just.
It's Article 10.
It depends on how you interpret this.
Letter A.
Public body includes the entire room that's deliberating the issue. It doesn't mean you just shift from your select board seat to a public seat. And really, Tom, if you, I know you have no intention to affect things. I know you said that, and I, I trust that. So why wouldn't you just remove yourself from the room?
Well, Lynn, I, I mean, I guess we'll let the board decide.
Do you have a copy of the original? Like the original right there, Tom?
Tom?
Yeah.
Do you have a copy of the original?
Yes, I do.
Can I see it, please?
She is talking about that right there.
So in the original, it says right at the end of that paragraph that.
Yeah, because it says.
It, it says, though, such member-based.
It, it says, "though such member may still participate as a member of the public or private party if applicable." So, if they may still participate as a member of the public, asking them to leave the room is, uh, kind of a mute point, they won't be able to participate as a member of the public if we ask them to leave.
So I think the key word there is "if applicable," but I think it's.
All right.
Okay, thank you for your comment, Lynn.
Okay, so, under, um, Article 11, in the, um, V L T C, um, policy, it should be the Chair of the Town of Danby Select Board to, um, so number one in the enforcement. It, it says in here that we're supposed to use the name of the municipal legislative body, and it's just saying the Town of Danby instead of the actual legislative body. So, we should put in Select Board there. And then in number two, it's the same thing, it says to put in the name of the municipal legislative body, we've just got the Town of Danby. So, we should change that to Select Board. Number three, same thing, legislative body should be Select Board. Number four, legislative body should be Select Board. Um, in B, an enforcement against an appointed officer, it should be the Select Board, they're saying the legislative body. In 12, it should be Select Board under, where it says the Town of Danby, it's the Town of Danby Select Board. I think those were the, oh, and under 13, this policy becomes immediately upon the adoption by the Select Board. Not, it can say the Town of Danby Select Board or the Select Board, either or, since it's Town of Danby's policy. Those are the only changes that I see that, and they were actually in the original one, and I don't know how they got changed, but.
Does any member of the Select Board have a problem with inserting the word Select Board in those situations that Tom just mentioned?
You know, I think it's appropriate to put them in there.
Is there any other discussion on the policy? Okay, Doug?
No.
What was that?
Oh.
Can't hear. I, I can't hear you, yes or no?
Oh.
No?
Oh.
Mike?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
And I say yes. Okay, the next item on the agenda is a motion to set the date for the regular Select Board meeting in July on Thursday, the 15th, we're moving it back a week.
Same time?
Same time, same place.
I'll make the motion that we set the date of the 15th.
So that's Tuesday, the 15th?
Thursday.
It's July, not June.
Oh, sorry. I'm good with that.
Any discussion? This gives a little time with the Fourth of July, the week before. Uh, Doug?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
And I say yes. Okay, we have some new business. I need a motion to approve a liquor license for Mama Tamaro's Italian Deli. I wish to sell beer and wine there.
I'll make the motion. I'll second it.
Okay, motion is made and seconded, is there any discussion? No discussion, Doug? Mike?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
And I say yes. The next item is to accept a letter of resignation dated May 13th, 2020, 21, Town of Danby Select Board. Let this serve as my official letter of resignation for the Town of Danby Treasurer, effective June 30th, 2021. All the best, Douglas R. White. Is there a motion to accept the resignation?
I'll make the motion to accept it.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
This is not the type of motion that, uh, really requires, um, discussion, but there should be discussion following it if this is accepted about what procedure you wish to follow if you find a replacement. Doug?
I wish you wouldn't do that one, it'd get fun. Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
And I say yes with regret. Is there discussion on how you wish to?
Who's Doug's assistant?
Maureen.
Is Maureen capable of doing the job and is she interested in the job?
Um, since this just came in at, uh...
You haven't had a chance to talk to Maureen yet.
At six o'clock this evening.
So we've gotta appoint somebody by next meeting.
We have to appoint somebody by the 30th, we're gonna have to have.
Well, we've gotta, we've gotta appoint somebody because it's gotta be done in a public meeting, in our next, our only meeting between now and this is, um, June, um, whatever, meeting.
Right, we could always have a special meeting, but it would be nice to have someone and have them shadow him.
But I, I, yeah.
Yeah, it'd be real nice to have somebody shadow him to.
I guess the thing is, though, we should put that out there for the townspeople and tell them that we're looking for a treasurer, we may have a lot of people that are interested in that, and it would be for the rest of the year, or until next.
Till, uh, town meeting in March?
Yep, and then obviously they could run for the position from there.
Do you want me to speak with Maureen tomorrow?
I think we should do it as a complete, to everybody, I mean, obviously.
Have letters of interest for the next meeting so we can.
Okay, so you would like to have, um, an advertisement?
Yeah.
Yes.
I have a question. What is, um, if you, if you are gonna put it out for public with notice, are you gonna add like a kind of a description of what is required?
I guess we would wanna, we, we would all have a, that we'd like it, somebody with the ability to step in. It, it's gonna be quite a, a thing to step into and can actually, you know, do it without getting frustrated and giving up on it. But I don't think we would actually have any mandatory requirements.
But I think she's wondering if like a job description with it.
Yeah, like, is it, like, I mean, I know there's a lot to it, but like once he's into it, like, once whoever steps into it is there, like, is it gonna require somebody 40 hours a week or 20 hours, or it's kinda as needed? Or would that kinda be what Doug would have to say?
Well, state law lays out what the responsibilities of a town treasurer are. And, um, the town treasurer is not an employee of the Select Board. The Select Board has the right to set a rate of pay. Uh, other than that, they're, in this case, they would be an appointed official, but normally they are an elected official. Yes.
Suzanne Contursie, did Doug White give a reason why he decided to resign?
He did not. It was the one sentence letter that I read.
Brad, this is Lynn, um, it might be helpful if, when you post the position, you post what software and knowledge they need to have, what skills are necessary for the job, um, specifically the, the software that's been used.
Okay, thank you.
And this is Annette Smith, um, it probably would be relevant to post the approximate salary or whatever the, um, pay is. I mean, my understanding is this is sort of a full-time job, so knowing what, what the compensation is would be worthwhile.
Any other comments on this? So, would you like me to put an ad together and email it to you to proofread?
Yeah, I mean, Lynn and Annette's, you know, comments were, I think they should be added to it.
Uh huh.
Yeah. And.
Okay, that's what we'll do, any other discussion on this? Okay, then we'll move to old business, is there any old business?
Excuse me, Brad, this is Annette, um, I'm not sure when to say this, and I think you didn't get my point before, but I think this falls under new business, since it's not old business. Steve, I really appreciate that we can comment on the agenda items, but there is a requirement in statute, and all towns do it, that you have a separate public commentary. And it's usually at the beginning, some towns put it at the end, but then people will have something to say, and I tend to sit through the whole thing. I watch a lot of town meetings, so I've given a lot of time to Select Board meetings, and you don't know what's gonna come in in the public comment, but, uh, usually it's, you know, 10 minutes at most, and people might come in and have some issue that they wanna bring to you. And so, I think that it is, uh, not only appropriate, but if I could send you the statute that shows that you're required to hold a public comment period, that, because there're gonna be things that are not on the agenda. And for instance, I have a question I wanna ask you all, and there's no place for me to ask it on the agenda, so where do I do that?
Under new business, could you, if it was something new?
Uh, at the moment, I can do that, but I'm suggesting that you put a typical public comment period.
Well, that's what I had and you didn't like it.
Well, that was because you didn't also let us talk during the agenda items, and I'm saying that for things that are not on the agenda, it makes, uh, sense to have a separate public comment period. Maybe nobody will allow a comment, but that's just the way.
So, Annette, do you have anything under new business you would like, or we can call it public comment?
Well, and, but you've got that at the end, and so, I've seen people who come into a meeting, they wanna say what they wanna say, and then they go home. But this way, if you put it at the end, then you've gotta have, you know, people have to stay through the whole thing.
So are you saying you don't have anything?
As long as, Max, what my question is, is have, have you all had training? Have any of you had training in the open meeting law?
Yes.
Have all of you had training in the open meeting law?
I, I'm not sure if that's relevant, if the Chair says he's had, um, training and he's following the Roberts rules.
Well, it's.
And we appreciate your comments on, on helping us.
Sorry to say anything, I mean, the, the Climate Council, when they met, they had a session on the open meeting law, and it was actually a really big session. I could send you that video if you'd like to watch it. It's not just for the Chair, it's for, they're kinda, it's, it's, uh, very, uh, important to understand what you can and can't do as a member of the public body. So I will send Brad the video from the Climate Council, they got a presentation about the open meeting law and the public records law. It was from the administration and the Attorney General's Office, it was extremely well done, and I'd just like to ask you to please watch it. Thank you.
Thank you. So does the board wish to make yet another change on the way we handle public comments?
Well, if you wanna add public comment to anywhere on your agenda, um, at the beginning and.
Started off having it at the beginning and you all know how that went last month.
Last year, it was at the end.
Right.
If we're gonna put it on, we'll put it at the end, in my opinion, because we're doing it the same as it was last year, we're allowing people to comment per item on the agenda, and we can have public comment at the end.
Would you like to put that in the form of a motion?
I will make the motion that we put public comment after old business.
Okay. Is there a second?
Excuse me, uh, this is.
Wait a second, we, we, hold on, we need a second.
Okay.
Somebody's willing to second that motion, to put public comment after old business?
I'll second it.
Okay, now we'll have discussion.
Hello, this is Elijah Bergman, and I have a statute up currently. And it says that the public shall be given a reasonable opportunity to express its opinions on matters considered by the public body during the meeting as long as order is maintained. If the public is not given an opportunity to comment before decisions are made on, uh, specific agenda items, you know, for instance, if an ordinance is passed, before, uh, ma- the public gets an opportunity to weigh in, that is a violation of 1 V S A 312, Section H, and, you know, I'm an attorney, I don't specialize in municipal law, but, uh, I have experience with the open meeting law.
Elijah.
I think that that's a pretty serious concern, that I think that the Select Board would hate to have, uh, its ordinances and its actions invalidated, and, uh, as I'm.
Hey, Elijah, can we cut you off for a minute, please?
Consequence for violating an open meeting law is, uh, attorney's fees, and so, I think that it would, uh, create real liability and waste of town time and finances.
All right, great, Elijah, you've said that three times, thank you.
Thank you.
Now, one thing, we've been allowing public comment during everything today. I don't know if you just signed on or if you weren't hearing, but every item that was on the agenda, Brad said, anyone for public comment.
Greg?
I thought it offered stuff in the beginning in Project Roundtable that you were able to comment on each agenda item.
It was.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And I would like to remind people that they can always submit a letter to the town clerk asking to be put on the agenda. So if you have something that you'd like to bring to the meeting, you simply send a letter, and we'll be more than happy to put you on the agenda.
So, this is Annette, and, um, I just wanna say that based on Elijah's, uh, reading of the statute, it sounds like what he's done is okay. I still think it's good to add the public comment, not finally being at the end, just see how it goes that way. Just as you did last time, it sounded like it worked okay, so thank you.
Okay. Uh, Doug, are you in favor of public comment at the end?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
And I say yes. Okay, is there any old business?
Is this where I can ask questions?
No, we haven't hit public comment yet, that's next.
I didn't know that was gonna happen this meeting.
Do you have, do you have any old business?
I don't know where.
Or do you wanna do it under public comment, will you pick your spot, Tim?
Okay.
I'll shoot it out there, you tell me what you wanna do with it. There were a number of loans made back in 1993, low-interest loans. A number of them are still outstanding, uh, they were supposed to be 10-year loans. I haven't seen this documented in any of the town records, like the annual report. Where would townspeople find that information?
What's the town treasurer?
Yeah, and that actually, it was the, what is that loan program called? It's been a long time since I've heard anything on that.
Bennington-Rutland Opportunity Council, and the select board spent quite a bit of time, about a year and a half ago, um, going through those records. And the, uh, some of the loans have been paid off. And the people who still have outstanding loans are getting a letter every month from the treasurer, recording payments that have come in or reminding them of payments.
Where can the public see that? Uh, for, to me, it sounds like, it sounds like the kinda thing like...
It's a public record, so you could...
It is?
Yeah, you can make an appointment with the treasurer.
It's not in the annual report, though?
No.
Okay. Is there a reason? I mean, don't we, don't we always put that kinda stuff out there?
I mean, there might be a line item. I'm, I don't have the, uh, town report in front of me. There might be a line item.
Well, because that really isn't Dambi's money. That was...
Right.
I was thinking about that, but the checks would go to the town of Dambi.
Yes.
Yeah, and...
But, um, you know, it's, it's not a type of item where you would list...
See, I'm not even sure if there's foreclosure on those type of loans.
Well, it is a mortgage on the property.
Right.
So, we have a property right now that may or may not come on the market. The person passed away, and that property could not be sold unless the loan is satisfied.
It sounds to me like the kinda thing you do with back taxes. Uh, even the water district, and I'm not in favor of posting names, I never have been, but you put the information out there, it seemed like it would be that kinda thing. It would be out there for the public to know. Thank you.
Well, this is Annette, I have a question.
Yes?
I guess it's old business. Um, can you please tell us why the ATV ordinance was removed from the agenda, and why the planning commission report on the ATV ordinance was removed from the agenda, and what the select board is planning to do?
I have no comment on it. Does any other member of the board have a comment on it?
Well, I'm the one that took it off, so I'll comment. Uh, at this point in time, I personally feel that without trail systems that we can connect the roads to, that we need to just take a step back. If private citizens wanna work with property owners and create trails, then I would be happy to look into opening roads to connect trails. But until then, I think we should wait.
I'm with, I'm with you a hundred percent on that one, Steve. Because we don't need 'em riding all over our roads, just to get, 'cause we got no trails in Dambi, none at all.
That's not true.
If we don't have no trails in Dambi, why the hell do we wanna put 'em on all, all of our roads? That'd be stupid for us.
So, Steve, I wanna thank you for that. Uh, this has created a lot of concern and distress for a lot of people. And I was gonna beg you tonight to please drop it, because we all need to supply it, and we do not need Dambi divided over an issue. And I just am very grateful to you for, uh, dropping it right now. And Doug, there is a, a, a trail network in Dambi. It is on Woodlawn Mountain.
Yeah, but...
But you can't connect anything up to it. And the, but I, I am concerned about the activity that I had heard about that's taking place in Dambi on Main Street, Cory Hill Road, Staples Road. I've heard complaints from people that this is already going on, that people are going on private property. And so, I wonder if we could talk about what, uh, can be done to enforce this activity?
Well, the ordinance would've done that, but I'm not going to comment.
Well, Pete, it's, it's, it's an issue that we pay the sheriff to do complete work, and I understand that this is happening a lot on the... I will, I think I have the ability to share with you that the lands that are being used on the, um, the Cory property are about to be shut down. And so, that may be that problem. Like, I think that we, what this whole thing has exposed is, we have a problem in Dambi with ATV activity, and apparently, the town is kind of known on the internet now as a destination place. And I've heard reports of riding on private property without permission. And I know that it's an extremely difficult thing to enforce, but if we do have, uh, sheriff presence on weekends, when, uh, that's, that's when it appears to be happening, like on, on Main Street, maybe that's the place to start, to ask the sheriff to do some enforcement.
Uh, that's what I have already done. Dreya, and then Suzanne.
So, um, what, we've done one of our planning commission meetings with, uh, the sheriffs have a non-pursuit. So, even if the sheriffs put their lights at an ATV, they don't stop. The sheriff can't pursue them. So, that's not gonna do a whole lot regardless on enforcement. It is my understanding that game wardens are allowed to pursue, and game wardens also have access to trails. So, at some point in time, when this is revisited or we talked about it, speaking with the wardens would be an avenue that would be more beneficial. And if we do have more trail systems, there's already a contract with VAS, so with the game wardens for patrolling them.
Thank you. Suzanne?
I love that. I didn't know that game wardens were the ones that could pursue. And I think that's an important point that maybe hasn't been talked about before. Sorry, Suzanne Kontorski. Um, because as it is with patrolling, um, Dambi roads, I live on South Main Street, and we frequently have a lot of ATV traffic, as well as rela- regular traffic. And, um, more concerning is actually the regular traffic with concerns of the ATV traffic. Because the regular traffic is moving at fifty miles an hour on a twenty-five easily, at, from six forty-five in the morning all the way through the day. And there is no law enforcement. And while I know this is videotaped, and probably Justin will see this, I, I know Justin Graham, and he will sit over at Tommy's, and, you know, right across from my house. Um, because it's a particular dan- particularly dangerous area. It's a invisible hill around a corner. We have a lot of, um, with the weather warming up, a lot of walkers, a lot of kids, kids on bikes, some have helmets, some don't. And, um, I'm, I'm particularly worried that, you know, with law enforcement being at minimum for cars, that we probably won't see very much pursuit for ATVs, which primarily only happen, by the way, on the weekends. I'd never see, except with one person, on the road, going to get lunch, uh, on the weekdays. But it's generally on the weekends that we see a large influx of ATV traffic, particularly Saturday and Sunday. So, um, and that is not when our sheriffs, who we pay a lot of money to be on patrol for Dambi, is...
You ever see him?
Oh, I, I didn't see him. He wasn't, let's put it this way, he wasn't down on the South Main Street where they would connect to Cory Hill Road to go to the trails.
He was on Dambi over.
Okay, he wasn't by me. I didn't see him. Um, but I would also just like to say that, um, with, uh, with the ATV trails, I, I do think that, you know, um, with the snowmobile trails, they've done a great job of working with landowners. I, I used to be, um, someone that worked with, uh, snowmobile, uh, this organization before, when I had a lot more property. And I think, you know, i- if, if the ATV were able to do that, with working with landowners to try to create a more, a larger trail system than what's available, this would be, uh, something to revisit maybe in the future. But right now, I think, you know, going to Steve's point, he made a great point, which is maybe that we should kind of, you know, investigate it a little further when we can enforce these laws.
And I think one thing that came out of this is a great discussion on our lack of everybody's feeling that we're not getting enough law enforcement for actually, um, what we're all looking for. And I think that's probably gonna make the top of our agenda, I feel, instead of the ATV ordinance, because as someone said, and they might've said it tonight, we're really bringing the cart ahead of the horse. And that if we actually feel comfortable with our law enforcement and maybe, you know, get more hours or share with, you know, another town, or try to get some sort of police department that we can rely on a little more, that at that point, maybe the discussion is, is a viable discussion. But I, I agree that we definitely need to, um, I mean, living in the village as well, that we see 'em all too, so...
And I will state for the record that I received several requests for law enforcement on the weekends. And I contacted the sheriff's office, and they promised me that this past weekend, they would be on hand, and apparently saw them, so I'm glad to hear that. And when you have an issue, please let me know, and I will communicate with the sheriff. Suzanne, and then Pete.
I would just like to say too that when, when, uh, Dambi, uh, people are coming to the select board and saying, you know, we wanna have something that is meaningful to us, to the town, say the ATV ordinance, what would be great is a number. And I only say that because with only a thousand, well, one thousand thirty-three residents of Dambi, if only twelve people are coming to Dambi and saying, "I wanna ride my ATV on the roads, because I wanna get from one property to another." It's different than saying, "There's two hundred and fifty people," or half the town. Um, you know, that number would be really great engaging for public, like, idea about how many people really do want this. Instead of saying, like, "A lot of people have come to me," maybe a, an actual number, fifty people or a hundred and fifty people have come to me. Because then that gives us a little bit more perspective about how many people are engaging in that particular ordinance. I mean, it's just an idea and a thought. I just, I know for me, like, if twelve people were people, 'cause I only see on the weekends maybe fewer than twenty people going from, uh, South Main Street to Dambi, uh, up Cory Hill Road or whatever. Twelve to twenty people doesn't constitute up, like, completely turning the town on its head for an ordinance. And so, I just wanna make sure we know, like, more hard numbers, that would be really helpful for us, than for me at least. Thank you.
Well, I personally have received the same number of people against it as for it.
Right.
So, I get, talked to five people both directions.
Right. That's, that'd be good to know, like, five people against, five people for. Yeah, cool.
Pete?
I tried a lot of calls, a lot of calls, because they're off-road vehicles, not on-road. They don't need to put ATVs on their road because of off-road ATVs. They're made purpose for off-road, not on-road.
So, this is...
On highway.
Pete?
I'm actually on North Main Street, and I actually own land both on Cobble Hill and North Main Street. And I do see ATVs go by here. I'm in a twenty-five mile per hour zone. And they do go by usually about thirty, thirty-five, but I also see cars go by much faster. And I must say that being able to utilize a ATV to go from one location to another for townspeople and make it a permit process solely for people who live in this town to keep people coming from other towns out and make that a process, I think you can control the problem that I foresee that you're talking about here. You're trying to prevent people coming from other towns and destroying what we have here, and I completely agree with that. But you also need to understand that people do wanna ride their ATVs on the road, and they're going to do it either way, because you don't have enough police to monitor the situation. So, make it a meaningful process for the people in the town to be able to utilize, and make it a permitted process, not just having a VAS permit, but actually a permitted process. Thank you.
Now, I wanna...
Pete?
I can't agree. Why don't you let, I think, have, everybody's gonna be riding them, they're gonna come from other towns. That, a lot of guys, playing up here from New Jersey, and they bring their four-wheelers up, and if they'll think that way, they can ride their damn roads, and they'll make a hell of a mess of them.
Pete? Okay, please, I have people in the audience that have had their hands up. Pete?
Just an observation, Brad. Uh, last weekend, for what it's worth, I saw some ATVs go by on trailers, uh, pickup trucks. And I don't know if it was our, our Dambi folks, but if it was, I appreciate it. And it's just a germ or something we can, can continue or include in our discussions in the future. Might be a helpful way to do things.
Thank you. Greg? Don?
Brad, I've been, I've been living on Cobble Hill twenty years. And for twenty years before that, I worked in Dambi on my UPS truck, driving these gravel roads. People, local people have used the roads when they wanted to, as long as I can remember, and they still do. But I think by, by passing the ordinance, what we're gonna be doing is accepting responsibility for what these people do. I think we oughta leave well enough alone. If it ain't broke, don't fix it.
That's what we just... Well, the problem is, is...
So, hi, well, can I say something else? Just so we know, if there is no ordinance, all the ATV activity is illegal, whether it's your neighbor down the road, it's all illegal. So, if you enforce though, it should be enforced equally, not just for one person going down South Main Street. It should also be the person going down their own road, because if it's illegal, it's illegal.
Well, I think that's the point I was trying to get to when we were saying that, is we, we've gotta get enforcement in place first, and then if we wanna add the ATVs, at least if they're legal, they're legal. Because, yeah, it should be exactly black and white. It's illegal or it's not illegal. The problem is, we're actually setting ourselves up for more liability, giving them the wink and a nod that, "Oh, it's okay for you to run it," because then, you know, we're letting them actually commit a misdemeanor instead of actually enforcing what we know is going on. And I, I think that's the, you know, where we've gotta actually have some plan for actual enforcement in general. I mean, I, I, I think, you know, I, I don't wanna sound like, uh, broken record, but I think we do, we're looking for more enforcement all the way around. And ATVs would be part of that. And I guess what would be a byproduct of that, let's say, would be people illegally running their four-wheelers right now would then be stopped and ticketed and maybe impounded. And then at that point, I guess there may be more outcry of, "Let's try to adopt some sort of policy." And as, um, one of the guys brought up earlier, I didn't catch his name, that, and, and I don't even wanna start speculating, you know, maybe just local areas for people to get from house to Sugar Woods or something, but...
Yeah, I would like to say I don't think we need to have this discussion at this time.
Right.
We have a whole binder there that's about two inches thick with letters. We know people's ideas and sentiments, and if it comes up at another time, so be it. Andrea?
Could I ask a question?
Excuse me, Andrea has her hand up.
Hi, Andrea Michaelust. Um, this seemed like the right moment, uh, within this discussion to say that I think there are a lot of neighbors who also feel that we need to think more deeply about this, um, this issue. And I have the signatures of sixty-nine of them here who signed a petition over the past few weeks asking that if the select board wants to continue to think about this issue, that, uh, some committee be appointed to, um, study this in depth and really focus on that. Because, yeah, otherwise these select board meetings are gonna go on for hours. Anyway, and I'm super relieved that this was dropped as an agenda item tonight, so I appreciate that.
Thank you. Jane?
I'm not clear, because, you know, between the masks and the hearing aids, and in fact, I'm a hundred and eighty. But I wanted to just say, um, is it my understanding then that, that for now, this ordinance has been tabled while you reconsider some other priorities, uh, like the enforcement? Is that, you know, the liability the town might have if we have the ordinance, is that what you're, I'm hearing? Is it your table?
Well, let's, let's not make a whole list of things, but for now, nothing is happening.
Is it my understanding that you're tabling?
It's completely dropped, yes, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay.
Could I ask a question and also say something?
Who is this?
Beth Thompson.
Yes.
My question is, I do see a lot of activity on Edmunds Road, and so, do I now have, um, a law enforcement person I can call about the people who are finding pathways into the, um, Smokey House Center land? That they are, there's a sign up that says no to ATVs, no, um, on permitted vehicles, and now they're going up a different way, but they all come down in front of my house. And so, is there someone I can call?
I would call the sheriff's department.
And you've always had this ability. You can call the sheriff, or you can call the game warden.
And they're on duty to the point where I could say, "I've seen these people go by, I know they're gonna come down in two hours from now."
I'm sure Justin would come out.
Well, I have no idea what their schedule is. I have no idea what their schedule is, you know, no one does. If there's an emergency, obviously, they're not gonna be there in two hours.
I did want to say one thing.
And you can email them as well.
I'm concerned about the ATV ordinance itself, but I do want to voice my concerns about the process and procedures employed in the last month or two regarding that. Policy and procedure are extremely important to me, because they are in the end what makes endeavors such as considering, considering a road use ordinance fair and respectful to all. So unless policies and procedures are maintained that allow for all stakeholders on both sides of an issue to be represented, as well as due diligence in providing factual data around such questions, decisions are made based on opinions. Even in soliciting and receiving public comment, unless real data is inserted into the equation, decisions will be made based on subjective opinion rather than objective data. And I have an opinion, and you have an opinion, but that's not really as important as what's gonna be good for everybody. So regarding the process, I was actually very surprised that the Planning Commission was tasked with looking into the ordinance. Not that it wasn't a possible logical next step, my problem with that is that at the end of the last Select Board meeting, the agenda item was tabled, because it hadn't been properly appearing on all publicly available agenda documents. But there was no motion made or vote taken to pass the process on to the Planning Commission for review. So maybe the board collectively decided to do this after the meeting, or in subsequent conversations, or maybe one or two individuals made the decision. But in any of those cases, though, it means that the decision to involve the Planning Commission was made outside the public forum, which in and of itself sidesteps transparency and inclusivity. In addition, many have asked that there be more access to Planning Commission live meetings, and I would hope, in the interest of more citizen participation, that the Planning Commission would consider providing such access in the future, even though it's not required. I bring all of this to your attention with the aim of trying to foster our sense of community in Dambi, to be respectful of all town citizens, and hopefully to lessen the divisiveness and subsequent instability that such matters tend to stir up. So unless the matter, matter is already dead in the water, I'd very much like to see the Select Board commence a fair and open process of investigative research and review of the question with a report that could be made available to everyone. I just want us to get along, folks, and things were starting to get kind of crazy on that one, I, Dambi families, and I was like, "Why do we have to do this way?" So that's why I'm just saying, you know, I think the more transparency there is, the better. So, thanks.
Thank you.
On the Select Board, I didn't know nothing about it, turning it over to the Planning Committee, so I heard it later on. Nobody tells me nothing about that until it's all already done.
And I don't think that should be happening in a fair and open governmental town situation.
Every Select Board should be notified before we turn it over to the Planning Committee, but I was not told until it's already done. I don't think that's quite right. Brad always does that, I don't know why.
This is Annette, can I speak now?
Yeah, I think you've spoken more than the three times that I asked.
Was that a yes?
Sure or not? Go ahead.
I wanted to respond to what Matt was saying about the town issuing permits, and my understanding is that if, if money is charged, that that would make the town liable.
Well, you can issue a permit about what it is.
There is a liability issue that comes when a town does that. So, that, that doesn't seem to be a very good idea. I have been talking to the people in class, I'm, I'm understanding what it is that it's possible in terms of enforcement. And one of the, all of the fees that are taken for registering their ATVs, that goes go to VASSA. And they go to VASSA, road payments, and they go to VASSA, term maintenance, enforcement. So I think that, I'm gonna have further conversations and try and help the town in, in using what tools VASSA has to, I, enable some enforcement. And I want to thank Beth for her comment, and if you, that is the reason that I asked if you had tech training in the open meeting law. Because the passing of the, looking into the ordinance to the Planning Commission was not done according to the open meeting law, and there are fines for violations of the open meeting law. So I, I just want to make sure that we all are doing things appropriately.
Are there any other comments? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make it.
Motion by Tom, seconded by Mike. Doug? Mike?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Yes. Meeting is adjourned.